It's nine oh two, we'll open up our combined work regular session of May nineteenth, twenty twenty. Place silence and shut off your cell phones and let's do the pledge. Williams, please leave, please leave.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so additions or deletions. Mel.
Yeah, I have two additions. I have a sheriff union contract and a mental health ordinance.
Okay.
With the. I would, I have one other addition that I would like to discuss. If possible, for just for discussion is a conflagration fees for some of the firefighting on the north end and throughout Lake County. Keith Little, and I had a discussion at our fire defense board meeting on Sunday night and I would just like to add that on for discussion.
Okay, fees, conflagration.
Conflagration dollars, yeah.
Okay. Right, add on to whenever we get to the sheriff unit contract. We also need to have discussion of possible action on the non-union people also.
Yep, correct.
So just want to make sure that is there. With that, we will move right along. Nine o'clock weed ordinance discussion. Foz, come on up, sir.
I was just gonna be here to answer questions if you had.
Oh my gosh, you just opened the door yesterday. So, I guess go ahead and give an overview of the ordinance.
Okay, so basically, Lake County has had a weed ordinance for some number of years. We're not sure, nobody can find it.
Well, we can find it, but.
Oh, you can find it, okay, well, I wasn't privy to it when I rewrote this one or wrote this one. We need an updated weed ordinance, we need to kind of get the weed board reactive. If you guys are aware, the Lake County Cooperative Weed Management Area works cooperatively with agency people, with private landowners, to maintain and control noxious weeds. The county needs to have a weed program in addition to that for a couple of reasons. One, there's a significant amount of state funding that comes to the CWMA or to. If weed board really active, they can also apply for grants. And a significant part of the CWMA's budget is Oregon Department of Agriculture grants. Okay? I don't have the numbers right off the top of my head, but it's north of a hundred thousand dollars a year. Okay, so we'll get into that more on the second when we come and do the CWMA update at the June sixth, right? Okay, so anyway, but it dependent, those grants are, us receiving those grants are dependent on us having a weed board in place and having a county weed ordinance, okay? That's the positive side. Here's the downside. The downside is, is that ninety-five percent of the people we try to work with want to work with us. They're very happy to, you know, work cooperatively. And then there's the other five percent, okay? And at the moment, one of the reasons the weed board hasn't been extremely active is because they don't feel like they have the ability to do anything about the other five percent.
The enforcement side.
Yeah, the enforcement side, just go up to say, hey, look, you know, there is an ordinance, it's in effect. We have an active weed board and you really do have to do this. So you can work with us or, you know, we can take the route in the ordinance, here's the ordinance. Okay, so what we're trying to do is get our administrative house in order before, you know, so we have the ability to deal with the five percent. So that's this ordinance. I, I wrote the, wrote the ordinance based on some language that we think came out of the original weed ordinance and also the nuisance ordinance, the county nuisance ordinance.
So, okay, so I, I've been able to review this once and sort of a little bit, not as much as I would like. Ordinance is set by law naturally. But on a lighter note, just to start off, before I get to some of the other ones, under definitions, number five, noxious weed means any plant determined by the county commissioners and/or Oregon Department of Agriculture to be interest public health crops, livestock, land, wildlife or property. So if we decide to say marijuana was bad for you, it would become a noxious weed.
You know, in Lake County, it may not be statewide.
By this ordinance, we, we, we couldn't. I'm being a little bit facetious here, but.
The county commissioners determined that that became, went on the noxious weed list and it was injurious to the public, then it would be a noxious weed in Lake County, it wouldn't here. The way that noxious weed list, I, I know you're being flippant for that, but the way that.
But, but my point's getting there is that puts a lot of authority on weeds to the board of commissioners that are not weed experts. Now, I have quite a bit of background in weed itself, but then no matter, our board is setting here can make a determination that this weed is noxious. And if I remember right, the guidelines on noxious weeds, they had to have some detrimental effects, correct? To livestock, humans, so on.
The state adopts a noxious weed list. The state ordinance, your Oregon Department of Agriculture adopts a noxious weed list. And the way it's worked historically is then the counties also adopt a noxious weed list for their county, okay? And, and there are certain weed species that are prevalent in western Oregon that we don't really deal with because we don't have enough precipitation for them to grow. And so they generally wouldn't make it on our noxious weed list.
So.
Yeah, Tansy Ragworks, the one, you know, that they deal with all over western Oregon.
Oh, yeah.
And we don't have that.
So I guess my point on that one was, and I was being facetious, maybe that's an example, but is, is that appropriate? Or is there, should there be a presentation to the board of commissioners of what weed should be added to the list?
Yes, and it's stated in there that the commissioners will adopt a noxious weed list that is developed by the county weed board, okay? And presented to the commissioners, okay? So the, the weed board, which is in effect, okay? They're not real active right now, we're hoping with this ordinance that they'll get more active.
Is Jason Jaeger still working with the weed board?
Absolutely, he's your, he's your county weed supervisor.
He's still the supervisor, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, he's a part-time county weed supervisor, basically part-time county weed supervisor.
Full-time CWMA working. And he's not paid by the county, he's not the county.
The county puts money in, a certain amount of money in to administer the weed, the county weed program.
Right.
Okay? And there, some of that money does go towards Jason's wages.
But not as a county employee, but through, but through the CWMA profit site or whatever. So.
I can't remember, Foz, exactly how it's set up.
Well, it's through the CWMA, but you, when we originally set that up, I think that was about five years ago, at least. And probably back when we originally set that up, we recognized Jason's position to also serve as the county weed supervisor. This was part of the deal so that we were, we had the vehicle in place so that we could apply for the grants. The OPA grant.
Well, on the enforcement side also.
Right, but since we don't have an active ordinance.
I need to pull up, I need to find the ordinance, that's whole another discussion.
Right.
Ordinance twenty.
We did have one. Pardon me?
Ordinance twenty.
Well, this is ordinance twenty-eight.
Yeah, so this, this would be, we would be basically rescinding or amending ordinance twenty, whichever we decide. If we, if we go with this. So my next question, number two, on page two, you don't have it in front of you.
I don't have it in front of me, I tried to print it out this morning, but it wasn't. My computer from one over after me.
So it, it says weed control district. What do you mean by district? Usually district is.
The way that RS five six nine is set up, okay, is that the county adopts one or more weed controlled districts, okay? And what Lake County has done historically is their weed controlled district is Lake County, okay?
It's not a taxing district.
No, an area, no, it's an administrative area. Some counties have smaller weed controlled districts. They actually, you know, have weed controlled districts with a weed board for this district and a weed board for that district. What has happened historically in this county is it's all Lake County, there's one weed board.
Okay, then that, that clarified, that's all I, I did want to make sure that this new proposed ordinance wasn't creating a tax. Not wanting to create a taxing district.
It's an administrative district for where that weed board is going to operate.
So getting to the back to number eight, enforcement. And I'm, I'm trying to understand what your meaning here that's down on C. Obligation of the property owner or property occupier. I believe that legally, everything comes down to the property owner. Now then, if it's leased property for farming, might be a little bit different, but I'm, I'm not, I'm just wondering how we go after an occupier legally.
If he doesn't own the property.
Yeah. If it becomes an enforcement issue. And I'm going back to probably some of the nuisance things is whenever there's a rental house that has a nuisance, we go after the property owner because they own the property, they pay their taxes on it.
So, so I stole that whole section right out of the nuisance ordinance.
Word for word, your nuisance ordinance.
Okay, word for word, I can't answer your question, I don't know. I assume that if you had sent a letter to, because. Because this also applies to agricultural land and ranch land, okay? Where the nuisance ordinance doesn't, okay? I assume that if you sent the letter to the WC, then that would be the property occupier.
And I, it, it does say, however, there's a comma directly after occupier and says whichever the county commissioner shall determine is appropriate. So I imagine that we just, as a, as a rule of thumb, a determinable property owner is what's appropriate in most cases.
Well, I, I'm going back to the nuisance is, it seems like that we always send the property owner a letter.
Yeah, that's, that's where that head up. I'm assuming that we've just always determined that was, that was appropriate.
Yeah, the, whoever's occupying, say, or no, they give the letter, but the property owner does too. And the property owner usually stimulates activity upon property. So, okay.
I'm not sure how to address that for you because I just.
Well, I think, I think, I think it's more of a legal question, Foz, for us to look at with our legal counsel. Ask that question. And so that's used again on the back page under a property owner occupier. If the county commissioner's ordered that the charge shall be personal obligation of the property owner occupier. So I, I believe we just need to have a legal review. I never sent this to legal, did anybody send this to legal?
No, Mark did.
Mark did.
Mr. Bailey went over it with a fine ticket.
And.
Okay.
Did, what did he say?
He never, he never had a question, an issue with this one, but I'll bring it back to his attention.
I haven't seen an email from him on it or anything, so, or am I? So, and then I get right back down to the very bottom and it says weed control supervisor is employed by the county. And so he's really not, he or she would not be employed by the county, but we contribute to the employment and they act as the county weed supervisor. And I probably couldn't find hairs here, but county employ triggers many different things.
Oh, right, right.
And so I'm a little sensitive for it to say employed by the county.
So.
Just in case.
Right, oh, right, and there's, so there's counties that do it like, like County does, where they basically have an appointment of a county weed supervisor, but they're, and they, they provide compensation to the CWMA or something. And then there's other counties like climate county where they have a weed supervisor and a staff. So I'm not sure, this is way out of my bailiwick for correct terminology, you know, like that'd be appointed by the county rather than employed. I like that, you know, because you could appoint, I mean, if we just use the current situation we've got five years ago or whatever number of years ago, the county commissioners appointed Jason as the county weed supervisor, okay? And they provided funding to the cooperative weed management area to, to administer, help administer that program along with the weed board, okay?
Are we still at fifteen thousand dollars for that?
What?
Are we still at fifteen thousand dollars that we contributed?
That's a question for Jason, I thought it was twenty, but it should might be fifteen. It'll be here on the second, so.
Yeah, I can't remember.
Yeah, I, I, I wanted to say.
I'll have to talk to my budget committee and see if they remember.
Yeah, I would want to say it was twenty, but. It's fine.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I do, I do think you're right, I don't think it changed this year, but I think it was up to me.
Not serious.
Okay, there, there's just four of the budget committees.
I know.
Do we need an amendment to the budget real quick?
I don't know, you guys want to make an amendment?
The chair would have to.
Come on, get a beer.
They ain't gonna do that.
I was taking a shot at all.
I'll send them to you. I've been having to on the computer a few people, I thought I got my edit, so. Okay.
So I, what we'll have to do is, my, my question's pretty much been answered. I didn't know legal counsel would review this, this is the first discussion.
I got an email, I, I gave this to Commissioner Albertson first.
Yep.
And he, I gave it to Kenny Cooper first to make sure I had it in the correct format. And then I gave it to Commissioner Albertson and I got an email back from him and he said, where did Kenny Cooper come into this? I've been spending a lot of time with Ken, okay?
That's, that's troublesome.
My little bills up at Summer Lake, so I just asked him if he'd look at this thing for it. He said he, you know, I have been doing some ordinance.
Yeah.
So, anyway, but I got a, I got an email back from, from Mark that said, basically, I've looked at it, it looks okay to me and I gave it to legal for a quick review.
Okay.
Okay? So, yeah.
I wish Mark was here, but he probably has answers. But we have to go through the hearing because this.
Oh, sure.
Once we get it to the exact format by the board of commissioners, because we are ordinance. And we need to make sure it's legal, do we rescind the old one? And this is a complete new one, or is ordinance twenty-eight an amendment to the one? I don't know how he was working.
He said either one was fine.
Okay.
That would be up to you guys.
Okay, we can look at it, definitely try and figure out whether or not. I'm, I'm pretty good with, with most of it, I think the only real concern I had was on the enforcement side of it. Where we get into, I, you have that five percent that are just not going to manage their weeds and that they can give you quite troublesome to work with and they don't want to work with you. It's like, you know, heck, you're on my land, get off, you know, I'm like, you tell, go ahead, try to tell me what I'm gonna do with my own property. I do, I, the thing that concerns me is well after we're gone, having this kind of an ordinance in place is that that room for abuse from our board as to what we determine, you know, I mean, like Commissioner Waters was being a little flippant in terms of marijuana.
Well, sure.
But in terms of anything really regarding what would we consider to be, what's, what's the threshold of where their property is a nuisance? You know, I mean, because I can drive from my place and granted this is a long drive, but along Highway thirty-one and you get over on a three ninety-five coming out of Valley Falls and you can look off just to the side of the road and I can see huge giant patches of Canadian thistle and, and just, you know, it's kind of.
Sure.
And I love to be able to mitigate that, but again, like what's the threshold in terms of where weed, you have to step in and a person's not working with you? And then you have the issue of like the organic farmer who is strictly organic, he's not using any kind of pesticides or a weed killer or anything on his property. And then weed come in as, you know, on the enforcement side to try and make sure that they're going to mitigate the weed issue because now it's impacting their neighbors, it's impacting other things as well, so I just.
I, I.
I'm trying to cognizant of it.
Yeah, but I guess for me, and maybe I'm an optimist, but I think we have some fairly significant checks and balances in this. We have a county weed supervisor that identified the problem and approaches the landowner. You have a cooperative weed management area that has the ability to not only do chemical control, but do biological control, we at times have done mechanical, go out and pull it type stuff for the organic guy.
Yep.
And then you've got a weed board on top of that, so you would assume that the way this is written, if the county weed supervisor is having a problem with an individual, the first step wouldn't be that the county commissioners, but it would be the weed board.
Right.
And then, you know.
Yeah.
And the way that works is, is maybe somebody on the weed board knows the individual personally and they go out and say, hey, look, you know, there is an ordinance, we don't want to be jackbooted thugs. Nobody wants to be jackbooted thugs, you know? But you are affecting your neighbors.
Correct.
I mean.
Correct.
Okay, so I have more faith in the common sense of the people involved in this. There is potential that in the, you're gonna have the perfect storm and something's gonna get out of hand. That's why this guy's standing in the back.
Right, and, and this is also largely why I'm bringing this forward too. Because for his benefit and, and all of ours, to make sure that everyone knows that we're being cognizant of this and that they know that there is a process to this and it's not just the board of commissioners that are going to be. Enforcers are scoping out different people's property.
You know, it says in your findings, you know, the first, the priority is control. The priority is cooperative control, I mean, that's.
I know, there, there's a good process in place with this. And, and like I said, I am comfortable with the way this is working. I just, I want to make sure everyone knows that we are looking at that issue as well.
Oh, absolutely.
And I really appreciate.
Well, and just, I mean, because my hair is gray and I've been at this a while. The first time we brought a weed ordinance to the county, it was, and this was when the CWMA rewrote this first time. County commissioners at that time, here's the ringleader right here, said no way because it had, it had enforcement action in it. I mean, it was like the sheriff is gonna come out and put you in handcuffs and drag you off to jail. You know, that kind of, no, I'm serious, it had that kind of language. And it was not reasonable, okay? And so we tabled it and, and a few things happened. The biggest thing for, for me was the nuisance ordinance got passed. So that gave us a template of how we could make the weed program fit into something that has already been accepted by the county.
So a couple of things, I, I go way back to working for the county road department and spray beautiful and back when it was a different structure. And the, the weed guy was, the county weed guy was an employee, he was the department road department. And we sprayed most all government and private. And we did through sheriff's order, spray some places that fit the ordinance at the time. By sheriff's order, as posted, we went out and we actually sprayed them. Very few, but we done it on a few of them, a little bit, you've heard this speech before, it's sort of nerve-wracking to go on private property with a sheriff's order and start putting chemicals on the ground.
Sure.
Today's a whole different world and if you watch television and you, you see the commercials that round up, you, you get in this lawsuit and get all this money, it's a different view about chemicals today. So the thing I just, I, I don't see in here, and I'm reflecting back to other ordinance, is the options like James and we were talking about, is there's other options and the original ordinance, if I remember right, allowed chopping of the weeds, mechanical mowing and that type of stuff.
And I, I can't point you to the right spot in here without, I mean, it's more kind of.
Yeah.
Okay, but there's something that, it's, it's, the language is appropriate control, okay? So our appropriate control methods, we, and we complete that kind of stuff.
Yeah, that, that's something, Foz, that whenever, because we deal with this on right-of-way spraying with organic places and different things, and so there has to be an option for the people that are totally opposed to chemicals.
Sure.
And so I, I think in today's world and for the county ordinance, we want to be clear, if not crystal clear, that there's options other than chemicals and that would be the tool, just, just to mitigate risk and make sure that, that everybody involved has an option, and so that.
Well, and especially, I mean, when you were spraying weeds, there weren't biological control agents. You either used a chemical or you chopped it, now it's.
We actually did have some bugs that we put out in a couple of places on the forest, yes, we did. Rick Gage was the supervisor and William Merrill, Jack Wilson, myself, we sprayed it. And we did use some biological control and we also had a contract for musk thistles that we hired a couple of college kids to go pull it on the forest this time. It's evolved quite a bit from then, so.
Yeah.
But I, I think for, just to give, make sure the options are there, and I, I apologize that it probably was there, but I think it's sort of.
Well, I didn't specifically say. But I said, you know, effective treatment or appropriate treatment or something like that is how I have it. And I can't point to it right now, Brad, and I, if you want to take the time, I'll find it.
No, I, I think that, I think the board of commissioners need to look at this.
Sure.
Individually and maybe make some suggestions and things. I haven't put any time to it at all until it came onto the table.
No, I know there was something in here about that, so I was just kind of bringing it over the.
You, you have this in word format so we can.
Yeah, so if, I ain't know how. If we go through this one and make some amendments to this draft, you want us to run it by you, by the weed board or?
Well, the, the easiest thing to do right now is to run it by me and then let me run it by Jason and John O'Keefe. Or, because, you know, John's the active member of the weed board right now and so.
Sure.
They've seen this, they've both seen this, and so, I mean, yeah, then I can be, I can be your leg.
Okay.
That, that's, the less that we have to get out.
Right.
The better. Because I need to read, read the question and I probably will suggest putting something about mechanical.
Right, if, if you want to just provide it to me before, when you guys are ready, and then we'll, we'll get it. Right, if, if you wanna just provide it to me before, when you guys are ready, and then we'll, we'll get it to the appropriate people and.
Okay, so is this, this on for start of the, this will be a two-part hearing and it is, the first hearing is when?
June second.
Yeah, so we have to get it out of draft form, use the law, we.
By next Wednesday.
June second, okay.
So I did actually find on first page, number six, effective treatment under the definitions. Means to take measures appropriate to stop the reproduction and propagation of noxious weeds as appropriate for the physiology and the species and as appropriate for the soil type. We could. We, we could have meant that to include a more definition.
Yeah, you could actually put right there a second sentence that, you know, this.
Correct.
This may include mechanical, uh, chemical or biological control agencies.
Yeah, right, and I think that'd probably be the best place to insert that definition there.
Thank you, that's right there. That makes me more comfortable with contingent of people out there.
Sounds good.
Well, and I mean, you know, I, I think about it, if you took the organic farmer and they said, I don't want chemicals here to them, I'm an organic farmer, the first thing I'd say to them, it's okay, you know? Are you willing to address your problem by, you know, cutting all the blossoms off your musk thistle so it doesn't make a bunch of seed? And go to the neighbors, you don't even have to dig it for me, just go out there with a pair of clippers and clip the blossoms off before they go to seed. Yeah. Yeah, and if they said, yeah, I'd be willing to do that, it's like effective treatment. No, it is, if it's a musk thistle problem, that's an effective treatment.
I love your optimism.
We're, we're not, we're not so optimistic.
Right.
So what we did is know there's a contingent that would, worse than me, a debating.
Yes.
Would say. So, but yes, pause, thank you, and we have this, that's come a long ways compared to the first one that came through. Whoever that ringleader was that said, no.
There was, there was a, there were the pointed fingers on the optimist.
Okay, and, and Jason and I will be here on the second day. We annually come in before the commissioners and do a little update on what the CWMA.
Okay, perfect.
And so we'll be here on the second for that, I think, on, won't we?
Yep.
So at that, whenever Jason comes, a clarification to the board of commissioners of, um, there's so many people say, well. It's county property, so we, we get sprayed for free and that's not the case. Whenever there's grant dollars available, it's able to be leveraged, but you know, we have several different county projects around.
Right.
And just cause we contribute to weed supervisor, that we, any entities of the county get free spraying. Now, if there's grant dollars available for chemical companies, you think.
Contribute to the weed supervisor, but then on the other side, you also have provided the CWMA a budget to administer a spray program on county lands. And that is right now. I'm not positive, but it's, it's, it's either twelve or fourteen thousand dollars a year, okay? I, I have to add up all the different budgets, but that's the railroad, the airport, uh, the industrial park and other county lands, okay?
And, and the, so we need clarification, county railroad is completely leased out. It is county lands that has a private operator and they're responsible for all things on the railroad.
Not the way it's working.
I will talk, we'll have some clarification on this section, sir.
Very good, okay, well.
And, and it, it is our property, but they're responsible also, so I, I, I guess, who had mentioned, I'd want it all be ate up on that. Whenever we have the work camp area, we have industrial park area.
Oh, no, there's, yes, to provide it for different pieces, yeah, so, yeah. Okay, so we will come prepared to present what the county is providing the CWMA to administer their county weed program, that's the supervisor and the county lands thing.
Yep.
And how that all breaks down.
Yes. We all understand it more when we get the question.
Correct.
Good part.
Right, okay, very good, we do that.
Thank you for your time.
You have to.
Mister, you can stay for Mister Jones if you'd like.
No, no, I have to go.
Um, the.
Leave, leave, then we don't have a corner.
Is this yours? How do you spell your name?
Foster, F O S T E.
Uh, Mister Jones, you are next for running this a little bit over, nine thirty. Hopefully you can catch up here quick.
I'm basically here to answer any questions that you may have on our request.
Okay, so Mister Jones came before us wanting to leverage your community loan slash grant program, some dollars for. Can't remember what it's called, P D U?
It's a physio control life pack fifteen defibrillator heart monitor.
There you go. There you go.
And we, we, in the process over the last two years, uh, have been upgrading our equipment with a new ambulance. Two years ago and last year, we purchased a life pack fifteen to put on that new ambulance. Uh, we have two ambulances, um, and we're right now using the new one as the first out. And the old one, that's twenty years old now, um, twenty-one years old, as a second out. With less capability because it has a twelve-year-old, um, defibrillator monitor that does not meet the same requirements as this new state-of-the-art, uh, life pack fifteen. And we very much want to upgrade the second monitor, uh, to. So that we've got the same monitors on both ambulances that we're not confusing our EMTs. The big, also a big issue is, is that Zole, who makes the old one, no longer will recertify those effective next year. So we have the rest of this year to replace it. Cost for the new one, a quote I've got right now is for twenty-six thousand four thirty-one twenty, which is more than we can cover by ourselves. But we could cover half of that and I'm basically asking the county for the other.
So Jones, I think it's very commendable for you to, we talked about this some in the process. And you asked me what I thought about coming before the board commissioners and I, you guys agreed to come before us. I am, I am very pleasantly appreciative of how you're approaching this and it's not for the full amount. It is basically as a partnership, to be able to put this out there to the community. We're very conservative on seven dollars out of this, obviously, you know, the way the board works. But we have gave interest-free loans out of this and we have done grants out of this. And I'm, I'm going to speak out loud that everyone is different and everyone that comes before us, we have to make a decision at the time. But for this particular thing, I'm, I'm in support of a grant and I appreciate that you. Are willing to do loan or a grant, but I'm myself leaning towards a grant. That doesn't mean that that's for sure, but I wanted to put that out there. And at the same time, so you, I appreciate that it's, it's not for the full amount. Take note. Development of that, it's your.
For me, I, I think it's really good, good deal. I think the fifty percent split shows, you know, that we have, there's a partnership there. And we have talked about this during budget time already a little bit, you know, we kind of, this was coming. And I think, I think there's this huge need there, so I'm, I'm really good with this, really, I really have a lot of questions.
On our history of the upgrades that we've already done is that we've basically. Well, we haven't hit fifty percent, the disaster unit has provided a little more than fifty percent to other grants. But the ambulance, for instance, was a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, of which ninety thousand was in grants from local organizations.
But the fourteen thousand will help you get.
The fourteen thousand would allow us to purchase, that's the, that's the fifty percent. And that's roughly fifty. If we go for the grant, we'll get it and once we get it, whatever that final cost is, we'll go a half and half. And if there's money left over from the fourteen, we'll give it back, there's not gonna be a lot left more, it might be.
No, we're, we actually, we're, I'm, I'm perfectly comfortable with this whole thing, honestly, and I think that we can afford it. And the money is there for this purpose, so.
Entertaining motion?
Do you wanna do a motion today, I guess we're doing a joint session, so yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, the fourteen thousand, uh, dollar, uh, transfer to. Repays the disaster unit for the loan and grant from the community development loan fund.
I'll say grant over for the.
This is for a grant. This is for a grant, sorry.
I'll second the motion, motion's been made and seconded to approve fourteen thousand dollars being granted from the community loan program to the Paisley Disaster Unit. Further discussion, Mister Jones, I think you hit the timing right because I believe, hate to go here, but we always do, COVID nineteen is gonna change things. I think dollars are gonna get tighter and I think hopefully we're gonna see some of our businesses look to come to that grants slash, they will come for a loan site. For their businesses, so I think you, you got right in, under the wire. I, I really do, I, I really do, I, I'd be an optimist, I'm hoping that, that some of our businesses come and apply for some of those dollars.
Sure.
And to help them get through this, this time, it's an opportunity for them, I mean, um, just go off on that side on the loan site, prime plus two percent. And we, we loan up to thirty-two thousand, so the businesses out there, you do that, and I think your grant is sort of, got right in there, perfect time.
Good.
All in favor? I, I, motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, John. And, and Tom, I know you wouldn't come and ask unless it was needed.
Oh, yeah.
Because you, we, we've exchanged all the years you were on the budget committee.
Once, uh, once we have gotten all of the other locals for grants as we've been doing this, I've kind of tapped out all the people that I can approach. Thank you.
Do you say that, thank you?
Thanks, Josh.
Daphne, we have you at ten o'clock time, so we're gonna jump in some of our other.
Yep, you go for it.
Other things, um, I have, uh, land sale consideration, Scott Mobley. Is there, nobody's here to talk about that?
Nope, it's just you and me.
Yeah. So, um.
Melanie, you wanna jump in anytime, we, we might need some conversation on this one, so.
So, well, I, I kind of know. Scott Mobley came to me, I sent him to Mister Berman after some research. At the industrial park, there's one lot plus a partial lot that is still under county ownership.
Right.
These were not foreclosed lands, they were actually part of the, um, industrial park, so they don't go through the foreclosed land sale process. Get rid of them, uh, the assessed value is less than what, um, Mister Mobley's offering.
Yeah.
And so, uh, we have an opportunity for his property non-billable size lots to be taken into his full-size operation. Clean it up and all associated costs to do surveying, any, any title search and all that, it's all completely upon the purchaser to do.
Correct.
And he's offering a thousand dollars.
Yep.
Which is, I think, two hundred and fifty dollars roughly more than what the two pieces says for, I mean, I'll put them on that, number two row, so.
The, the only question I had on this, and, and I had not been able to clarify this with Dave or circle back with him, is that the, both these pieces are right along the railroad.
Correct.
And typically, we don't get rid of land along the railroad. Typically, we, we've been holding those pieces that border the actual railroad easement. So that, do you have some clarification on that?
This does not impact the railroad easement at all and this whole segment here is owned by, um. Dog Lake Construction or other interest holders.
Okay.
And so it's, when this road was vacated, this twenty-fifth lot gained half of another lot, so that turns out to be about forty feet.
End Street was vacated, you mean, that easement, that easement or which easement?
Right here, the one on the blue.
Okay, that piece right there was vacated, alright, that.
Just, just the roadside that's in half of it goes to each property owner whenever a platted road is.
Right, right, okay.
But you can see the railroad right away there and this little slipper is a piece of, that goes across the railroad to the other side, which we're right in that ownership. So it is not impacting the railroad right away anymore than all the other water.
Right, so we're, we're good, okay, just wanted to point that out.
Absolutely, you knew that, and when the first things I would have been.
Well, I, I kind of imagined it was, I just figured I'd bring it, well, bring it up because I, I was a little bit confused over that because it's been kind of the policy in the past to kind of hold on to.
Properties that are beneficial to operations in the county.
Right, absolutely, a border of the county railroads, so.
So I will make a motion to accept the offer of one thousand dollars for the two parcels, the parcel and the par- parcel, if I'm saying that correctly. With all costs or associated with the deed transfer, the title search and surveying and any of that, that the purchaser, the wanting to have done, will be included in the cost also. I'll second that motion, motion's been made, seconded and further discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
I, motion carries. Next item, budget resolution. So we have res- resolution twenty nineteen oh eight. Quite a bit of talk and research on this. Um, because of it's a, it's a fairly large impact to our.
General fund?
General fund contingency and.
We spent a lot of time to make up that eleven thousand, so, I'm just saying.
Well, what, what happened on this, the reason why this is here is because of, through the evaluation process and, uh, different things for that department. During the adoption of the budget last year, this year that we're in. The salary line on market increased. The decision was made by us as a board through evaluation of this department, effective July one. That information never apparently got to the budget side and was not to the budget at the rate that we had approved. And so today, we have to replenish that, so, uh, with everything considered, we gotta reduce down to reduce contingency by eleven thousand.
Correct, because basically, the personal services has to increase fourteen. And we're decreasing materials and services by three thousand and we're making a transfer from the general fund of eleven.
Yes.
I'm, I'm not, I, yeah, we have to do what we have to do.
Yes, it was, uh, an error.
Yeah.
So.
I'll make a motion to accept resolution number twenty nineteen dash oh eight in the matter of appropriation transfer. Seconded, uh, motion's been made, seconded, further discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
I, motion carries. We have, uh, I'm gonna jump down to meeting minutes. We have, I'm going to jump down to meeting minutes. Although I'm not. That's all we have left to do.
We have the sheriff unit contract.
Yeah, but whenever, we're going to take some time on that.
Yes, I know. We don't have enough time in the next eight minutes to do that.
So, meeting minutes of five-five, five-eight. Are the two we have?
Uh, Commissioner, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from five-five and five-eight.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And we're taking a break until ten o'clock. Coming back to the session at ten o'clock. Daphne, come on up.
Okay.
The new Kathy Miles, huh?
Yes.
Alright, well, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. I am just here on behalf of the mentor program to see if the county will be able to help support us a little bit. I know they have in the past and we've been very grateful for that. We have not been able to hold our annual fundraiser, Western Extravaganza, because of COVID-19. And that typically brings in about four to five thousand dollars. And that's what we're requesting from you all to help offset that cost. We've had to put our mentor activities on hold, but now we're back in the saddle. So as of yesterday, so.
Good.
Yeah, mentors can resume activities with the kids.
Awesome.
So, yeah, that's, that's a good thing. Everybody's excited about that. And we've applied for multiple grants. And one so far was denied because of the COVID. They are pooling all their resources to the bigger cities that were impacted the most. So that's kind of a bummer. But we still have a few more in the works that are pending. So we're, we're hopeful for those and we have some secured as well. So we have six part-time staff that help. One or a couple up in Christmas Valley, Paisley. And then here we have three, as well as myself, that run the program. And we have our four programs that we are operating, the one-on-one mentors. We have twenty-four kids actively enrolled in that. And then we have the peer mentor program through the high school, which starts during the school year, where the high school students go spend time with elementary students during breakfast. And they also have monthly activities they host. And then we have team mentoring, which is held once a month for third grade through eighth grade. And, and then we have the girl talk program, which is the class for girls, teen girls, seventh grade through twelfth grade. That helps improve self-esteem, relationships, just peer pressures, that kind of thing. So we had ten girls enrolled in that. Unfortunately, we only had that through four weeks and then we had to put that to hold. So we're trying to keep all of our programs afloat. And I think we're holding steady, but there may be some deficits there that we need to fill in some gaps that we're requesting from you all, support to help from the community to help, help these homeless kids that really need the support.
Right. I personally, I think, I think it's highly appropriate, just for discussion's sake. But I think we ought to give, give the five thousand out of the contingency and then bill the governor and state. Being that the large, the, the large reason why this is coming forward is because they haven't been able to do their fundraiser due to the shutdown.
I like to twist your foot on this. I too am supportive. We do have, I believe, enough dollars in the video lottery dollars where we went every other year that we've done this.
I just think they should be replenished.
And, and, you know, I'm trying to stay composed.
I had to go.
I know. It might have been that ring leader that you're following.
I don't know if I'm following anyone.
So within this, this, the monies that we have, and we've hit them a couple different times. I believe that if we continue to, in this next budget year, you're talking after July first, right?
Yes.
Because of, we gave funding in the.
Correct, yeah.
Melanie, she just gave me the thumbs up. So. That's where I'm, I think, I.
Yeah, I, you're used, talking about using the lottery dollars. Because we have plenty of those. That's perfectly fine.
Your caveat of trying to leverage the impact to.
I'm just, I'm saying that this is an expenditure after the first of June. I, I'm saying that this is an expenditure out of the lottery dollars that wouldn't necessarily be there against the fact that they weren't able to do their normal fundraiser and bring these dollars in and in other capacity. And so I feel like that, whatever we end up sending to the state and showing what our actual costs were, I think this needs to be captured in that.
You know, I, I, I appreciate that point. And, and Daphne, I think you know this, but it presented to us last year. Just to shore up and should be fine. And then COVID, actually what you're saying, this impact, we might have to go back to the county.
Right.
So I will make a motion to grant five thousand dollars out of the video lottery dollars for the mentor program. And to note Commissioner Williams' potential recovery of those dollars through COVID.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? Get those kiddos doing some idle times.
I have further discussion.
Yes, sir.
Um, so this last quarter, our lottery dollars were cut in half of what we were anticipating. So I think you should try to get those too.
Absolutely.
We, we, we can try, we.
If we're asking, I'm just saying.
Uh, we're in this motion, but yes, but the guidelines is we cannot recover lost revenue. And lottery funds are revenue source for us. Appreciate where you're going. Many of us across our calls are there.
I think, I think the one way that we're going to recover those dollars is to get our businesses and our community back up and running as soon as possible. That's how we're going to be able to.
Yeah.
Get those dollars, right?
In our, our state and our nation. So any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
I told Jay ten minutes after, I'm going to grab Jay and we'll.
I'm going to grab you.
We'll, we'll bore the audience with more accounting business.
What are we moving on to?
Pardon me?
What, what are we moving on to next?
This, this will be the addition of the sheriff unit contract.
Oh, sheriff unit contract?
Yeah, because the mental health ordinance is scheduled for ten-thirty. I, mental health ordinance probably isn't correct.
Or the civil commitment ordinance?
Ordinance number thirty-eight will be on that, ten-thirty. And also, you asked about Kevin, and it'll be the, this is the addition of the sheriff's unit contract and non-union also.
Oh, yeah, this is for non-union, union and non-union employees?
Two different things. We'll discuss both of them.
Oh.
Good morning, Jay.
Good morning. So, no more today.
No more today.
You've seen that, obviously. So good news. We have come to an agreement with the sheriff's unit, bargaining unit. I can go through these with you. The first two are just changes that are required because of the change in Oregon sick leave law. So no change to the contract. Nine-point-eight conversion allows people to convert some of their sick leave upon termination, but they have to have twenty years with the county. And it only applies to the officer employees. Tier one and tier two retirees are allowed to, you know, they're sick. They're unused, sick, crewed time, cast toward their retirement calculation. But that's not so with officers. So felt it was fair for them to be able to regain something with their unused sick leave. They can only, they can only convert up to a quarter of those options. Field training officer, show the two-point-seven, allows for someone who is assigned as a field training officer to be, to receive a differential pay on that five percent. And that's really common around the state. Most contracts have that. Fitness incentive, this pays two-hundred dollars to employees who pass that work path test. And it's, it's a pretty rigorous test. And then the only other article that is modified in this contract is the salary schedule. And what we have agreed to, with the courthouse unit, we went one percent each year, each of the three years, on top of the cost of living. That's where we were with this unit also. We offered that. After some back and forth, we agreed to a three percent upfront. And no, only cost of living the next two years. So on July first of two thousand eighteen, we, we'll retro back to them, calculate that three percent. They're going to one-time check. And then there will be no.
Two thousand nineteen, not eighteen.
Nineteen.
Nineteen, yeah. It's July.
What year is this?
July one, nineteen.
Yeah, last year.
Sorry, you.
You threw me.
I was running.
Yeah. So we'll make that payment and then they won't receive any other increases besides the cost of work.
And, and that was the result of mediation.
Right. Yeah, so that, that's where we were in mediation, which still didn't come to an agreement. But since, since that time, they had reflected and voted and agreed to that by this.
This is with the sheriff's department?
Yes.
The sheriff? Yes.
And the deputies, jail employees.
Yes.
Yeah.
Just want to make that clear for the notes.
Yep.
So it was a long process and we finally got there. And I think this is a fair, fair contract.
I think so.
If you want, if you have questions between now and whenever you want to make a decision.
We're going to act on it as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. So do you have any questions?
I don't.
There's not, really not a lot of changes and the changes that are in there don't have big dollars attached to them. Except for the, you know, the one percent, the three percent increase, but.
So I'll make a motion to accept the negotiated agreement between Lake County and Teamsters Unit representing road deputies. Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? I'd like to thank Jay and Melanie and Mr. Bailey, the negotiating team, for the amount of hours that was spent on this. And Jay, I know the comparison work that you put in was a lot. And so I appreciate the hard work. Melanie, I appreciate the growth and the knowledge that you've shown through these negotiations. So thank you very much. Any further discussion?
Thanks to Brad, that was a lot of work.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Jay, with that, we have housekeeping. Now, we, we have to have this discussion. Decision also is we now have two bargaining units that have received their increases. The question, I believe, all of us, you get asked quite a bit, commissioners get asked is, for the rest of the employees that are non-bargaining, including department heads and those elected officials, all-inclusive, is do they get the one percent and the COLA also? And that's a board of commissioners' decision.
Right.
Our budget committee, through that, we're talking, you know, to basically follow the contract guidelines or whatever it is there. The budget committee had recommended for us to do this, this thing. So I know this is tough to sit as a commissioner and have this discussion, but we have to represent our road department, our bare ground, all of our non-union. And we have to represent our department heads and our elected officials. So I know that we did budget for that throughout the current budget. For the next budget.
Correct.
And so, yes. And I think, Jay, though the word is in your mouth, but you're sort of, what we've always tried to do is treat all employees equal. And I think sort of the recommendation is, is to follow that for all employees.
Yeah.
James, there's only two of us here today.
Yeah, let's go ahead and make the motion.
I, I will, but yeah.
I, and I don't really have a, I, I've said my piece on a lot of this, where my comfort zone is, but.
I'm comfortable. So I, I will make a motion that the one percent and the COLA is also inclusive. This is non-union employees, including department heads and elected officials. To be the same.
For this current year?
This current year.
Just this current year. Yep.
Let's get seconded. If it means seconded, it doesn't mean that it has to pass, but if we can get to the discussion. Further discussion?
For me, I, I just, ah, no. Not even go there.
Yeah, I know. Good stuff.
I haven't been able to go there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much. Now we're going to take a fifteen-minute break. In the session, ten o'clock, our timed item is District Attorney's Civil Commitment Ordinance. Discussion, potential adoption today. But, James, I don't want you to give an overview, then we'll let.
Okay, while you're speaking. Yeah, Trace, thanks for being here. I really appreciate you coming just to kind of give a briefing on, on how this is important to you guys and how this has been affecting you. So there was a change in the ORSes, ORS four-two-six, at some point in the last five years. And I think it caught a number of counties off guard. But what this does basically is what was typically handled before by the DA's office in terms of civil commitment hearings, was now, was now no longer required by the ORS in individual counties. And in order to have that service provided by the DA's office and have the district attorney take care of those needs and, and to oversee those proceedings for civil commitments, we had to, as a local government body, request that service be provided by the DA. No additional cost necessarily on the actual county or anything that I can find, but it just needs to actually be requested by the local governing body, that the local DA actually administer those and, and represent our folks in, in those hearings. So that's, that's basically what I've done here, is I've drawn up an ordinance that we can adopt that will hopefully fix this issue. It has been run past legal counsel. Legal counsel gave it a big two thumbs up. They said that it's more than appropriate and I believe that it will solve the issue of the DA's concern as to whether or not he's even legally able to administer or to handle those legal proceedings regarding civil commitments. to administer or to handle those legal proceedings regarding civil commitments. Because I think that was his concern, that he wasn't able to do that by law, because we had not requested him to do that as a local governing body. Wasco County had the same thing. They made their, they brought their ordinance in last year. And I got in touch with them, and they were grateful enough to give me a copy of theirs. I went through and made adjustments to suit Lake County. And now that's what I'm bringing before you guys today, or at least you, as Commissioner Albison isn't here, but. Trace can, can fill you in on how this is important to them on the civil commitment side in terms of the struggles that their first staff has been dealing with, so.
What's yours?
So, excuse me, I appreciate your time. This was brought to my attention, this lack of legal representation during a commitment hearing. I was not aware of any issues up until that point. I had worked with DA, DA's in the past and was not aware of this statute or ruling. And wasn't aware until we were actually in court, and this was brought to our attention. I contacted the state at that point, and I was advised to tell the court that we do not appoint our own attorney. And the case was dismissed, luckily. There was no major fallout from that case being dropped. However, we have some individuals in our county that are highly symptomatic and would possibly benefit from going to a hearing to get a higher level of care. And at this point, we have no legal representation, so that puts us in a lurch. We're trying to maintain these folks in the community, however, they are raising to above our capacity.
Yeah, so that's, that's kind of basically where we're at, is where because of our lack of services, we, when we have someone who just needs that higher level of care that we simply cannot provide, we have to be able to have a process in place in which we can get them those higher services and get them to a point where we can take care of them. And so that's kind of where this is, and like Trace points out, there's no legal representation. Again, this is something that happened in the past. This has always been handled by the DA's office here in Lake County. And that was something that came up through with some other conversations with some of our, the state employees here at the county. This has always been handled by them. The change in the ORS, it's one of those things that just kind of fell through the cracks, and no one ever saw it. And it kind of caught a lot of counties off guard in terms of it just sucked up on us, and we didn't realize that this was something that we had to have in place via ordinance. So that's basically what we're bringing forward.
So it creates a hardship for us to try to help our community.
Yeah, well, the health and welfare of our community and our people is where we need to be at all times. So the, the only uniqueness to this is to adopt this today is to declare an emergency into the emergency call, which is well within our rights, and I'm comfortable with doing. And so I'd like to state what emergency is, is the health and welfare of our community for people to get the services that they need. So with that, I would entertain a motion.
I will entertain, I, I will make a motion to accept the ordinance requesting the Lake County District Attorney to represent the state's interests in civil commitment proceedings and declare an emergency, being that this ordinance being necessary for the health, welfare, and safety of the people of Lake County, an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance shall become effective upon signing.
I'll second the motion. With all said, ordinance number is number 38. Further discussion?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries effective immediately. That's fine.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trace. I really appreciate you coming today. Thank you.
Have a good day.
You bet.
So Department Updates. Anything, Mel, you want to throw out there? I just know you've been. Thank you for all the dick, dick stuff and everything. I know that you're working with Nikki on COVID dollars right now, trying to find out what we can possibly ask for. AOC and all of us are pleased that we're able to do that, but we're very disappointed with timeframe to be so fast from the governor's office. And the guidelines doesn't really ask for supplemental documentation, but everything that we do, some of it needs to make sure there is documentation for that, because I believe they'll come back and ask for that.
Yeah.
Do you have any other, I, I sort of talked over your Department update, but.
I don't know if it's my department or Nikki's. So we've already done half of, half of that reimbursement period, and then they decided it didn't matter. So we have half of that work done. I am hoping we can get community corrections time in my own issue for you first.
Absolutely.
She said mine should be yours first, but I don't think it's fair not to count your guys' hours that you've put into it. I don't know.
We're, we're trying to get some clarification on there, and absolutely, that's where we're at because of, we've been, I'll speak about Board of Commissioners, we've all been inundated, some much more than others because of their, where they, we've asked them to work, but our normal county business has been kept afloat by just trying to make sure between you, myself, and the commissioners, bringing in the county business forward. Our, our time was devoted to COVID-19.
Which means our time was not devoted to anything else.
Yeah, and it's, the balance is, is a struggle. So anyways, I, I fully agree that it should be come down to what's intended, and that's intended to get to the county level. So anyways, but if your time, absolutely. Whenever, just to clarify that, whenever we put you as the information officer, we said, you've got it, you own it, you don't get out of it. That was, that's a pretty bold statement from the board, and we were serious, and you stepped up and done that. And made it through it and still doing that, so your time should be 100% covered as far as I'm concerned. Now then, on top of that, you was able to do county business too, and your time was devoted to COVID-19. So 100% of your time, absolutely.
But I just think it should, I, I agree with you, but I think it should be duplicated between several people here because, you know, we worked so hard on coronavirus, that was our, that's been our lives, and then we've been working extra time just to get county business done on top of that, and. I hope, I hope that they recognize that.
They'd be remiss if they didn't, if, just to hear the Board of Commissioners across the state how tired they are from conference calls and devoting multiple hours from putting plans together to just try and keep operations going.
Yeah.
So anyways, thank you for that. Thanks to Nikki, I know she's worked hard upon it too, so we have a good team of people here. Liaison updates, unless you have more. I sort of tried to get that out.
No. My AARP project's juggling along. We've kind of got some baseline spreadsheets going, and yesterday we met with security, I'm not a security expert, and trying to look at what levels of security we need and things, and so. We're meeting every two weeks now, which has been nice, and that's going good, and everything's going fine.
You know, not for today, but for the future, I mean, I think we're going to be looked at more and more, I think James sort of moved into the two as far as grants or people need some assistance. We go to the video lottery dollars pretty often, and I'm very pleased they'll help with it, but we might want to look with a projection. Dave, okay, this next year, we're going to have a smaller amount than what we have been doing or something. This next year, we got a paramedic carried over, but it's probably tighter.
Yeah, well, we were projecting the same amount next year, but we've already seen such a big cut, and hopefully that's.
Yeah.
But.
It, we, we're, it's going to, it's, from here on, it's going, we got it. The Board of Commissioners, I think, it's going to be a little tougher on different things. I'm really hoping, not here at the park, but on the loan program, since some of these businesses would consider coming to us.
Yeah.
And Betty, you know, speaking of grants and stuff, did Betty get approved for someone?
It was due, the application was due yesterday, Monday.
They haven't made a decision yet?
No, I'm stating, I don't think that, I just don't think they'll act like that. I'm sorry, that, that sarcasm just came out, I, I.
There's been some business owners that are very excited for the opportunity, and they, they've been asking.
It seems like, if I remember right, the discussion was states on turnaround as fast as can, the end of May is whenever, and we should know that hopefully we, we did that. But the other, on, on the global dollars that we have, where we went to earlier today, we normally loan that out at prime plus two, but under these circumstances, they can come in and request different interest rates possibly and everything. We need to look at all options for our businesses to go. Anyways, any liaison updates? I can, I can jump in there a little bit. Railroad, still working on Chrissy Grant's side of it. That $5.1 million from there, the match side of it, we do have another response from the FRA. They still are not wanting to consider the $1.4 million as match for the spur on Red Rock. That throws us into a whole nother looking at all the match we can and have to be too available to adjust, adjust to that. So that's in the process. We're working on that. Actually, things are slower right now also because of the COVID-19, working with federal agencies and state and all. So, and myself, Dave, I've been working on that long, totally, Red Rock. The, the agreement, the draft agreement between Lake County and Goose Lake Rail to, to service the debt for the loan from the business authority to the county is in draft form. It needs to be looked at very hard and treated very hard. It has went to legal counsel. He looked for legal content. We look at many different things as commissioners. So I really encourage everybody, when you melt, eat that up, and look at it hard.
Yeah.
And so that's, that part's still going on there. Just wanted to sort of give you an update on that side of things we're right in. 7:30, we have a call. Informational call with AOC Director, AOC President, just to have this building towards some unity of all 36 counties across the state of Oregon for the good health of our state and our counties to hopefully get through this economic crisis we're in right now. And so looking forward to that call, our call this morning at 7:00 AM with our senators and representatives in other eastern Oregon counties. I really felt like they have taken that turn, also a lot of them have talked about AOC and bipartisanship working on, getting things back to work. But that's pretty much for right now. You're good? Much, much years on the agenda, I think, if you could work.
Yeah. My, a conflagration dollars is one of my things. That is actually on the agenda. That's the last thing that I really have.
Thank you. I did write that down, too.
Right, no worries. Let me actually give you some material here that you can, you can breeze over. Say. Oh, I put it down. Hang on.
Yeah.
I put it on the computer. So I'll let you read this. Bottom part is what you really want to look at, where it covers the conflagration dollars at the very bottom. Basically, our, our rural land fire protection agencies, along with our volunteer fire departments and everything else, they, that we're anticipating a pretty hefty fire season this year. And we need, because of the fact during COVID, we weren't able to do the controlled burns that we normally do. And because it's been such a dry year, we're anticipating a drought. We're, we're looking at, you know, what that's going to look like. I mean, knock on wood, you know, that we'll be able to manage it all. But we're just getting started here. And they're anticipating going to fire season on June 1. So when that happens, I think our concern is if we have another, either a Big Berry Point fire or West Creek, you know, fire, fire, or a Winna Rim Anna Fire or something like that, where we have, it just gets out of control, and yeah, you start to have things like tires get burned up, you have fire trucks to get caught, you know, whatever. A lot of those expenditures and dollars, they just, they, you know, for a rural volunteer fire department, it's a huge cost. And so if they can get something, not necessarily, necessarily to replace a rig, but some, some help to replace some of their tires and different things like that. They came up with this idea that if we could put $10,000 aside as a budgeted item for some of these needs, they, they wanted that, and we, we went through this to make sure that there were checks and balances. And as for this, for discussion really, because I know we don't have any kind of a line item budgeted for this year. But we want to, basically, if there was an accident or an incident happened, and they needed to get some of those dollars, that they, that, that, that fire department or that agency would send in a request to the fire board. And the fire board would then come to the county and request those, but it has to be signed off on first by their, their board. That way you don't have an individual fire chief from one area coming in and using up those dollars for all his purposes. We're knowing at where everyone else has kind of left, you know? It has to be signed off on by the board of the fire managers and chiefs. So, and that was kind of the checks and balances of kind of keeping that, keeping those dollars there, and then if, if those dollars aren't used, they just roll over into the next year.
So, yeah, we, we missed this budget time, this is the first time.
No, we, we have talked about this.
Yeah.
But it just wasn't looking like it was in the cards this year, honestly. We could still do this technically with the, with the contingency fund and things like that, but it's still, I'm, I'm, I'm uneasy about doing anything with the contingency fund. If there's other places to pull from to use those dollars, you know, that, because, you know, it's not necessarily a line item yet in our budget, to help some of these rural, like rural fire departments out, if we do end up having a bad fire year, and this isn't a, a budgeted item, I'd love to have that discussion with the board, know what our options are, or other funds.
So, so I think they're eligible on the forest and lands, which is sort of separate. So, so I think they're eligible on the forested lands, which is sort of separate from what's talking here, but the forested lands to leverage on some title three. Get along, that those title three make of the way. So there's that part. This ten thousand they're talking about is basically, doesn't fit under that at all. I, I'm not opposed to, if we can find the dollars to set up, with some very strict caveats not to exceed in any one year in the ten thousand dollars period.
Right.
I do like the idea that the fire defense board would be the.
Checks and balance of that.
The regulatory agency or group that would, and would call the DSA on some and say, this one needs to go forward.
Right, and they, they're the only ones that we have to deal with, that we're not getting requests from individual fire chiefs.
So is there, do you sit on the fire defense board, or is there commissioners that sit on?
I'm, I'm not, I don't sit on the board, but I have been invited to every single one of their meetings, it seems like, as of late. So they, they want, they would love to have a commissioner's presence on that board, so we can be there.
Well, as an executive official, a non-voting person, I think.
Correct, I have no vote on that.
Yeah. So, I like how this will progress. I guess, I don't have the money for that off the top of my head right now, as, as we're, you know, we're falling into all this.
It, it's, it's, it's something to, you know, we're bringing this back forward. And what I told the fire defense board and the chiefs, and Scott Rice was on the call, he really thinks that this is a really good way to, to go about this on the, he's the fire marshal. What we're, what I told them was, if, because we didn't get it through this year, we would still like to keep it on everyone's radar going forward. And I would have loved, I'll brief Commissioner Albertson on it as well, to make sure it's on his radar. He kind of knows that this is something that we're going to have to address. You're right, though, on forestry side, Title III dollars might, might apply for this if we needed to use those. But this is largely addressing the structural fire side from the volunteer fire departments and the rural RFPA's that protect mu- much of our unprotected lands, so to speak, which are no longer unprotected because we have the RFPA's, which covers us as county, as the county as well.
So, like I said, like this, maybe you can answer this question. Is there what's an allowable charge towards the ten thousand dollars?
So that, that is, that's a very good question. I think, I think they have some criteria listed that, that is actually spelled out. But if I'm just going off the top of my head, I think it's largely, you know, like I said, burnt, burnt tires, different things like that, you know, and they're driving over the, you know, you're fighting fire from the black a lot of times, and you're fighting it from the rear. There's still a lot of hot ash there, tires can get damaged, it can, you know, the PPE, different things like that. No, it's for unexpected costs or things like that, when you, you end up getting hit pretty hard, but it's not for wages.
Is it for traveling out of district?
No, no traveling outside of district.
The clarification sort of qualifying would be nice, you know?
Sure, and we don't get that.
Well, I just think for, for the fire board, it would be good too, because then have requests come in and say, well, you know, this is the criteria, this is what's allowed, but shows that you met here or whatever, you know? Ten thousand dollars is a lot of money if you don't have it, but it's nothing when it comes to a fire. You know what I'm saying?
Exactly.
And, and so, that's the reason why I say the criteria has to be as fair as it can, because if we may have multiple fires, we're going to ten thousand dollars.
Right, and I thought it was interesting that the chiefs were all in agreement that ten thousand was enough, because I was in the same place as you are, where I'm thinking, you know, you have a big fire like Watson Creek, and it comes through, and your ten thousand is peanuts. But so, how is it that this ten thousand is going to cover those costs among the entire county and all those different departments and chiefs and agencies?
You know, that all very responsible people operating that equipment, so they probably put a lot of faith within the volunteers in respect to their equipment.
And I think that they'll be fair in their distribution of those dollars and helping meet some of those needs. But they, they'd like to see a little bit of buy-in, I think, and, and help on this, because they are worried, I think, genuinely, and about another fire season and our major fire. And having zero dollars is, you know?
Do you intend to create?
Yeah, anything else.
So I, I'm in support, I'd like to see a little bit of criteria, what their criteria is going to be, not my criteria, but the fire board's criteria. Be interested, they probably already have some thoughts or ideas, but if they're going to be making decisions, they probably would like to have that themselves. Don't have to answer, where do you need the money in this next coming budget to live one, but it's not to know also that we need to. I think you need to take a look and see what's called.
Right.
And, but, um, I'm, I'm, this would be a fund that's held in the twenty-two year, as money's available, and that's, that's why we'd have to, if we do this, we'd have to make sure that, that there's no guarantee. It's a yearly decision by the budget committee and the board of commissioners to possibly keep a fund of the ten thousand in May.
It may change.
May change.
Yeah.
It's one of the first things that could go away, so if that's all, I'm proud of them. You know, generally, once it's funded, once it's there.
Yeah.
And generally, once you've funded it, then the next time, they want one.
Right, exactly.
So, as commissioners, we.
Oh, that's, this is very real, I, I get it, especially after a major fire, you know, and like, like, you know, and you spend those dollars and they go really fast. Yeah, you're going to like, well, maybe we should have budgeted more.
Yeah.
And so you're going to ask for more, I get it.
Yeah. So, but, but I'm, I'm in support if we can find one.
Yeah.
So the task from here is to.
Maybe a little bit of more outline detail on criteria.
Well, I think that's the fire board's responsibility. Go ahead.
But, but yeah.
I'm just sorry, I was just thinking we could not join the EOC.
I know, I went there, I went there, trust me.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
But, so that was a little bit of a.
Well, that's not beyond the discussion.
No, it's not.
And I think, I think that's a serious discussion for two commissioners to have, to be perfectly honest with you, because, you know.
No, I, it was a very, it was something I actually lost sleep over thinking about, because I know that we really wanted to put a foot forward and help out with the EOC side of things. And it was something that was really, I, I had to weigh some political side, political issues there. And in terms of me just deciding, okay, we're going to do that, and then we're going to see where we can address this in another way. It's not going to be one or the other, and I tried not to make it one or the other, and that was my individual choice. I really wanted to see this continue forward. At a later date, it is very possible that we may end up not doing the EOC membership, because we find that helping out our rural fire protection agencies and many of our volunteer fire departments is more important.
And I didn't mean to throw that on you, I, you know, you, you know where my boat would be.
I know, so.
And so, so I just, no, I'm not steering.
Just a little.
I'm trying, I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be respectful of what I'm doing.
Oh, absolutely, I, and, and I think I'm, I think I'm being respectful of everything.
Yeah, yeah.
Nice.
So, you have some work to work for.
Oh, I have lots of work to do.
Oh, yeah, there are, yeah, we can talk about it off on.
Okay, sure. But, but yeah, to see, this is why I bring this forward, because I want us to work as a team, as a whole board, and I want to make sure that we're all kind of looking at what we have in front of us. Yes, we, we're now doing EOC membership for a whole year, but now we're also looking at this, and incidentally, they are the same number. And this is, it's what we're seeing, though, we're anticipating a fairly significant fire season. And, and I'm, I've said that several times, I don't know how I can make that more clear, but all the fire guys and the ODF and, and the Forest Service, Barry Shulenberger was on the call for our fire defense board, and that's, we're all anticipating it.
It, it's not going to change, even on our, our smaller years, you're bigger than what they used to be, you just know.
Right.
We, we know that the management of our lands is not what it used to be. And with the fuels out there, we're going to continue to have catastrophic fires that's going to impact right on down to structures, communities and everything, because we're surrounded by seventy and publicly renowned that. The densities are beyond public.
Right, and we will be seeing, and because we didn't, that was very politically correct. We, the, we didn't do the field treatment that we normally do this year. We had had a whole briefing before us with, from that side of things, from, with the expert Barry Shulenberger came before us, and their whole team was talking about what they intended to do this year, and, you know, they kind of got nipped pretty hard. And because of COVID, and the social distancing, you're going to see more of that, even on the fire defense side of things, when we actually have those fires, you're still going to see that. Barry Shulenberger gave warning, I'm hoping I'm articulating this correctly. Barry kind of let us know that we will be, we will possibly be seeing that social distancing, so that when our guys come up to their guys on the fire line, we need to be cognizant of that. So it's just a lot of those different things, and we're working together in large groups. In the past, you know, where guys jump onto the truck and then keep going, you know, we're just trying to stop the fire. There's going to be other things around that now.
We're going to do some checks and balance.
So.
There are plenty of coming to in the year.
Yes, correct, and they'll give us a briefing. Fire, fire season will likely be declared at June, June one, so just as a liaison update, that is.
Yeah, I, I, I personally think they, they've pushed it back and back more and more to fire season being earlier and earlier. And I'm not going to be politically correct, and that's all based around because a lot of the lands haven't been managed to be fire resold. And so the public gets pushed into fire season earlier and earlier every year, because of lack of, lack of some activities that happen on the forest.
Right.
So anyways, looking forward to that.
The only other liaison update I have is that we're also still looking at some changes in the burn ordinance in terms of, because of what happened at the Anna Fire, we're still wanting to maybe make some amendments to the ordinance, I believe it's one oh six. In terms of how we, when we go into fire season, and, and some of that's on that sheet too, at the upper part of it, where we talked a little bit about, you know, restricting tracer rounds and different things like that, the use of during that fire season. And because that gives the teeth necessary for when you have negligence, ser- serious negligence that causes fires like Anna Fire, and I, I, that one comes to mind, because it's where I live, and I was the first person on the fire, aside from the idiots who started it. And shooting Tannerite propane in August is not smart, period. And it caused my community and this county a lot of heartache and a lot of problems, and serious impacts. So because those things might need to be addressed in the ordinance, we're, we're wanting to go back through and make sure that there are some teeth to that, so when they address legal issues later on down the road, after someone does something, that there is some recompense, and there is some justice that can be done, and because you can back this up with local county ordinances as well. And it gives some more teeth to the legal proceedings, the whole people accountable for their actions. So that's, that's kind of what the fire defense board is really wanting to push on that as well. So we'll probably be bringing something forward here shortly.
I, I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
That wasn't very politically correct there.
I just, I just hope those same rules for being responsible in setting fires would pertains to federal, state and other agencies, whenever fires get out of control and nobody gets in trouble, and nobody has to put the bill, and the private citizen that has campfires with the way ends up losing everything they have, forced to a level. So I agree with where you're going, but then there's that other part of you that is, is you need to prepare all the way through.
Right, which I think is something that I'm trying to work out, how I can reflect in the ordinance.
I bet you are. So, I, I did have one other follow-up I forgot to mention. The fairgrounds, the water sewer that the board supported so much, where we're at on that is I purchased a permit, I have a quote for, you can do that for the materials. I have local farmer Ken, who's going over the materials list, if you speak, he's ordering the two-inch double backhoe device and the meter. When it comes in, we'll pay for that also. Once we have that, then we will get that installed, and once we have that installed, I will be working with all the volunteers to start putting that in. So it's moving forward. So anyways, just an update on that, is I'm getting called on and everything, but I have to get some things together first before we can actually start putting the backhoe in the ground and all the big work. So there's over two thousand feet of water running, some people in there, so it's no small project for volunteers to do. That's all I have. Okay? We had no legal updates for today.
But don't forget to donate dollars.
Already done.
Already done. And we will adjourn at ten minutes after eleven.